Okay, we will start the meeting of the Urbana City Council Meeting of the Whole for May 17th, 2021. Will the clerk please call parole?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkins?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Present.
Okay, we will now have the first item for the approval of the minutes for May 3rd, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion by council member Wu and seconded by, I forgot. Oh, Jay, okay.
It was Chandra.
Oh, Chandra, okay.
You have a correction to the minutes.
Okay, we have a correction.
And I apologize if I'm doing that in the wrong order as well.
Nope.
So, sorry, I'm trying to pull up the right version. It says that the Committee of the Whole Meeting followed a Cunningham Township meeting, but it was a special meeting of the City Council.
Okay, any other discussion?
I have.
Mayor Marlin?
Just a small correction, it's on page three, item 12, under Council Input and Communications. The fourth item there is a votercade, V-O-T-E-R, instead of motorcade, that's an important distinction.
Okay, so are the minutes approved with the corrections? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry? Mr. Quisen, okay. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Okay, are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, see none, we'll move on. Are there any presentations other than Kevin Garcia tonight? Okay, seen, seen none again, time now for public input. Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Sheila Dodd, our grants manager, wanted to give an update on See You at Home.
Okay, should we do that now, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, Sheila Dodd, you have the floor.
Thank you, wanted to give you an update on our community team efforts over this past week. The team did outreach to homeless individuals that stayed at See You at Home. See You at Home provided a list of persons who had stayed at the shelter the previous two weeks. When, on Monday morning, when See You at Home staff and board announced to the shelter clients as they were leaving that morning, the shelter would not be available after Wednesday. So, the community team met Tuesday through Saturday at the Phoenix Center and MTD to provide, to do outreach to those clients that were no longer at the shelter and encourage them to apply for services and then give referrals for housing. See You at Home staff were also available at the Phoenix to help with this effort. The community team consists of Urbana Champagne, Champagne County Regional Planning Staff, Cunningham and Champagne Township, United Way Salvation Army, and Courage Connection. The team met this afternoon to debrief on the pause of See You at Home and placement of those unsheltered. See You at Home agreed to house the persons involved in the Section 8 C-19 program. This one, sure those in place for a voucher won't lose that opportunity. There are currently 13 involved with this program. Eight individuals were moved to shelters outside of Champagne County. The shelters in Bloomington, Peoria, and Danville were very helpful and supportive during this housing crisis. Each of those individuals had a rapid COVID test done prior to being relocated. Four people were able to stay locally with family. An additional two people are in addiction recovery, so also are staying local. The people that currently work with Cunningham and Champagne Township through their various programs are continuing to be served by the individual townships. Township staff are assisting with housing and other assistance the homeless individuals may need. Seven people were placed in hotels. Being sheltered in a hotel maintains that homeless status, which allows the individuals to qualify for other programs. City of Urbana and Champagne staff paid for hotels for those who did not have other options. The team debriefed this afternoon and who was being assisted by which agency to make sure no one fell through the assistance pipeline. There are two additional persons who may qualify for the C-19 program. However, See You at Home is not accepting additional persons at this time. So, the team will work with Housing Authority of Champagne County to find the best way to assist so they have an opportunity for a voucher. Some of the sheltered people that were there on Monday or the prior two weeks did not come back to the drop-in site, so the team was unable to do outreach to help that group. There are 7, 37 persons the team was unable to reach and do not have information on where they went. The community team is continuing to meet to try to keep people on track for the services that are available. There's a lot of emergency solutions grant funding as well as other grants. The challenge is to keep the shelter clients in a place so they are eligible for these programs. A new program has opened for veterans, so the group will refer eligible clients their direction. Through the last stimulus package, Champagne County is getting an additional 113 emergency shelter vouchers. These vouchers come with administrative, case management, security deposit, as well as other services. The continuum of care is working with the Housing Authority in designing a program to get the vouchers out the door quickly. However, that process may take 60 to 90 days before the vouchers are released in the community. The team will continue to meet, to brainstorm, and share information to help as many people as possible impacted by this pause. I'd like to give a big thank you to our community team. They have been amazing, working through Mother's Day weekend evenings, et cetera, to minimize the impact on our community. They have done an amazing job and continue to do so to meet the needs of the community. Does anybody have any questions?
Mary Als.
Thank you, Sheila, for that update. Could you provide a little bit more information what the emergency shelter vouchers would potentially cover? I know that they haven't developed that program, but what is the intent of that?
We just got noticed this week, the intent in the last round of era funding will allow additional emergency housing vouchers to get out on the street to help those that may be homeless or may become homeless, so we just got noticed, like I said, last, late last week, that 113 vouchers are coming to Champagne County, and we are the second highest recipient outside of Chicago, so there's obviously a great demand and need.
So, are those emergency shelter vouchers, are they supposed to be kind of a fast track into affordable housing?
Yes, yeah, they'll, they'll work similar to the way I understand it, and like I said, rules on all of these programs have been coming out six to eight months after the programs are launched. So, they are to be very similar to a Housing Authority voucher, but if somebody is, you know, in an emergency situation, this group of homeless service providers and the Housing Authority will work to design a program to kind of meet those needs and capture those individuals. The nice thing about this round of funding, most of the time, these grants provide the vouchers for housing, but that's it. And so, these, this round will allow security deposits and case management and administrative funding to help administer the program, so that will really help to make it successful.
All right, thank you.
Grace Wilkens.
Thank you, thanks Sheila too for all of your work and update on this. I had two questions, if I can squeeze them both in. One was wondering if you have any other insight on where to point people who are maybe falling through the cracks in the pipeline, you know, literally people I meet on the streets directing them towards resources and, you know, it seems like my understanding is the township is doing their best and pointing people there, but I'm wondering if there are any options for people immediately outside of, now that See You at Home is on pause.
Right. I would just continue to point them in the direction of Champagne County Regional Plan Commission, Champagne Township, or Urbana, or Cunningham Township, because we all meet as a team on a regular basis, trying to see, well, this individual has this need, and then the agencies say, well, I've, I've got funding that can help that person. So, I don't think it matters particularly, you know, if you refer them to the township and they don't have the funding, they would know who to refer them to. And we've been having individuals sign release of information to cover all our agencies so that we're able to brainstorm and help them on an individual basis.
Thank you, and my second question, which may be too big picture of a question to get into, and that's fine, but I think just worth mentioning is if you have insight on how we can possibly prevent this from happening in the future, like with the See You at Home pause in particular, and having more options so that we're kind of more resilient than just one place for the county.
That is something the team is discussing, because obviously this has had a huge impact on all of us, and so I'll be coming back to council at a later date with some more of our insight. Right now, we're just trying to react to the emergency situation, and we'll do our look back on what we can do better in the future and what, how we can design this to meet the greater need of the community.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seen none, thank you Sheila for that great report. I guess we go to public input now, and I see Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood first.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I will not speak at this time, I thought I had my hands down, but I guess this is the only time I will have the speech, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I will give my time to someone else, thank you very much, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, okay, next up is Alan Max Axelrod, please state your name for the record.
Thank you so much, name is Alan Max Axelrod, I'm a resident in Urbana. Could you put the clock up, please? It's all right if there's technical difficulties, but that helps, thank you so much. So, again, Alan Max Axelrod, I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm the campaign lead of Norman Shutoffs, zero dollar, all volunteer grassroots campaign, 48 organizations in counting, spanning the state of Illinois, north, south, east, and west. We've won four utility shut-off moratoria thus far, and as of today, the governor has signed HB 2877 into law. This provides $1.1 billion in assistance to renter households, where either the landlord property manager or the tenant can apply for that assistance. It also unlocks another $400 million in mortgage assistance. Although the bill was written with the ability to pay to utility corporations, it appears that that appropriation was managed separately through the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program, U-DAP, which was originally announced on April 28th as being $80 million serving 80,000 households. Today, during the governor's press release, they announced that they have already spent $115 million to avoid the disconnection of 115,000 households, that's not hyperbole, that's what they are saying. To be eligible for a U-DAP payment, you have to receive at least $250 as being behind on the utility assistance, up to $5,000 per household between 250 and 5,000. Ameren Illinois employees have been talking to us about their situation, and previously to that date or that time period, because it wasn't precisely that same date, they were disconnecting households that owed as much or as little as $50, they bumped that up to $150 after this city has passed a resolution on utility shut-offs, and after Bloomington passed an initiative before they passed a resolution as well, that's when that change took effect. So, again, all 115,000 of those households were at risk of disconnection, just like the Attorney General said, there were 800,000 households at risk of disconnection. The good news is that this program is working, but we don't know what the ceiling is for the payments through this program. We thought it was $80 million, they have spent $115 million, we don't know where that appropriation is from. I'm not really complaining, but there's a couple of things to take in particular note here. The governor's press release noted that there were 260,000 households that were helped through the block grants, LIHEEP, and that count also included the 115,000 households who were assisted through the U-DAP program. That is to say, our traditional programs have actually not been reaching as many people as marketed to. It's still around 160,000 or so, based off of the government's own numbers, and the expiration date for applying for the LIHEEP Low Income Home Energy Assistance Funds is May 31st. The deadline for the rent assistance and mortgage assistance that was outlined in the governor's press release is June 7th. So, this is something that we as a community should move as quickly as we can. Lastly, I want to note about the, the number of disconnections that have occurred in the month of April. There were over 16,000 disconnections in the month of April, which is a rate half as fast as the first week of utility shut-offs in the fall of 2020. So, thankfully, due to the U-DAP program, the most vulnerable households aren't being disconnected, and because of the deferred payment agreements, we've not yet seen the impact of these households being disconnected, because they may have subsequently been on the U-DAP program. We don't know exactly what's going to happen, but we're at least in safer waters, which is good news. Lastly, the Biden administration has actually increased the reimbursement percentage for their FEMA program, which includes housing the homeless from 75% reimbursement to 100% reimbursement. We have not applied for that, we should fix that, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Tracy Chong. I was happy to see at least one council, one council member attending the last CPRB meeting. That was great, and I'm also very appreciative that several council members did acknowledge the public's concern about the TESA incidents and actually talk about how you felt about it and assure us that there will be a discussion. So, thank you. I'm also glad that CPRB members took suggestions to discuss how they came to their decisions after the appeals hearing, especially since most of it happened behind, in a closed session, and the public had no idea what was going on. However, at the end, when, when they did discuss briefly how they came to their decisions, it was kind of problematic, and it seems like the board still had, has its problems. So, it'd be good to pay attention to what's going on. For example, in the past few months, this was the debate, and it has been established that the requirement for notarization on the complaint form was not in the CPR, CPRB ordinance, so to have the notary requirement was actually illegal, because it was never stated in the ordinance. So, it was quite disappointing to hear a board member justify that the action of city staff and UPD to deny complaints based on the notarization requirement was okay, just because they had been requiring notarization for many years, for the past 11 or 12 years. Just because something has been done for many, many years does not make it okay, does not make it legal. This is exactly the kind of reasoning and justifying the way people justify police, police officers' actions that needs to be fixed. Just because the police department has been set in their ways of using excessive force, not having much external oversight, having policies that always have a caveat that allows police officers to justify the excessive use of force, it doesn't make it right, just because it always has been that way. It just does not make it right, so I think this kind of mindset is quite dangerous, and we should try to change that. Second, my second question is, I saw the agenda that there's the collective bargaining, but I have no idea what it's about, is it about the bargaining for the police union contract? I don't know, I guess, will the public be given a heads up when discussions about the police union contract starts happening? I, I, I think more transparency would be good, right now it's just like a vague thing in the agenda, we have no idea what's happening, we can't give input, we can't do research, we can't, so yeah, heads up would be good, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Maggie Walker. Maggie, you're still muted.
How's that?
Better.
Good. Hi. I'm a resident of Urbana, and I'd like to address the situation at 206 and 208 West California. I'd like to start by thanking you, the council members, and Danielle for trying to find a situation, a solution for the homeless. Thank you also for looking beyond the legalities and trying to find a compassionate solution. I want to help too, and I voted for the recent tax levy referendum. However, I didn't vote to displace people who already have a home, to create a home for the homeless. If you read their leases, you will see that in point 11, which governs the renewal of their leases, it's very confusing. Some of them thought that they had renewed their lease. If any of you visited the apartments in the, the building, you would find that they are just like ours, settled, nice carpets on the floor, dishes in the rack. Try to imagine if someone gave you only two months to find a new home and move, and imagine that in the stress of the pandemic. As a landlord myself, I couldn't ask these people to leave. I think that we should ask them if they need another year to stay, and if they do, we should give it to them. I'd also like to know where the funds for this project came from. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Angie W.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I am a current resident at the property that was just purchased on California. I just want to put a human voice to your acquisition, because I have lost plenty of sleep over this, and I have never empathized more with the homeless than I do now, because by us having to leave, you are essentially possibly making us homeless. I lost my job, I'm not working. Right now, when I do, it's through extra help. Rents have gone up, landlords are asking just crazy things right now due to COVID, like two to three times the rent that you have to make to even be considered a steady job, which clearly I don't have. In your last meeting, the supervisor had mentioned that you had gone above and beyond helping us, providing things above what's required. However, we don't even know, and I'm speaking for myself and some other tenants, what the law is. We have no emergency contacts past 5:00 PM, if something were to happen here in our residence, we have been given very little information. It's just gut-wrenching to me, and I just would like those things to be addressed. And, and for others, people in the future, because this could very well be happening to you as you're watching this, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, I'm assuming she can do that.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
No, I thought I had my hands down, but apparently, they came, it came up, my hand came up again. So, I'm gonna go ahead and it might be, I need to just say I'm listening. I just lost my son, eldest son, to COVID-19, and, but I'm listening in, because I need to keep my mind busy. And I want you all who believe in prayer to pray for me, even send good thoughts for me at this time. Thank you very much, and I will not be speaking anymore tonight, but I am listening in.
Thank you Reverend Underwood, and you have our condolences. Next up is First Followers.
Yes, this is James Kilgore from First Followers. First of all, I'd like to pass my condolences on to Reverend Underwood for her loss. I'd also like to acknowledge the work that's being done by Sheila Dodd and by the township in terms of trying to deal with the crisis of See You at Home, and also draw attention to the suggestion made by Grace Wilkens that to investigate more deeply why this happened and what can be done to keep it from happening again. My main point here really is that I'm actually seriously concerned that as a key part of their induction, new council members have received a tour of the fire station and had a lengthy presentation from the fire department at a previous meeting. To my knowledge, we've had no recent outbreak of fires in Urbana, nor has there been widespread breakdown of fire department vehicles on their way to carry out their mission. We are not coming out of a fire crisis, we are coming out of a COVID-19 crisis, and we have $12 million coming into the city for COVID-19. Surely, the priority for the city should be how to address the impact of COVID-19, especially on poor people of color, who by the admission of the American Rescue Plan Act, where the money is coming from, have been the most hard-hit by COVID-19. Moreover, in Urbana, as in most cities across the country, there has been an uptick in violence during the pandemic, especially violence involving the use of guns. This has disproportionately impacted black people. The city should put the issue of fire stations onto the back burner and deal with the serious business at hand of responding to COVID-19 and allocating the funds from the American Rescue Plan. And I think the speakers that came before me are highlighting some of the aspects of the, of this crisis of COVID-19. So, I suggest as soon as possible that the city make public its plans as to how they will allocate the ARP funds, how they will set aside a fixed amount to address community violence, and how they will give at least the amount of time they gave to the fire department to those impacted by gun violence. Let the mothers who have lost a son, young men who are without a big brother, come to present at the city council and speak with new council members. Take the city council members on a tour of the neighborhoods where gunfire has become a routine sound. In addition, the decision about how to allocate the ARP funding must also give high priority to allocating funds to address the housing crisis, which has been exacerbated by the pandemic. All of this needs a process that has community input and, and is transparent. This is not a time for business as usual, which is what talking about fire stations amounts to. It is time to address the business at hand and put the COVID-related problems that impact Urbana residents as a top priority. As a city, Urbana has a poverty rate nearly three times that of the state average. We need a strategy for ensuring these funds take major steps to address those who have been impoverished by the status quo, then further ground into the dust by the pandemic. Stopping the massacre of black youth and finding roofs for the unhoused population cannot wait. First things first.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Nixon.
Hello, City Council, this is Sarah Nixon. First of all, I second what Mr. Kilgore just spoke about his urging concerning the allocation of the millions of dollars coming our way via the American Rescue Plan and his call for a genuine community input process to ensure that those funds go where they are needed. I also, um, I'm horrified to hear about my longtime friend Angie Williams, who spoke earlier. Her plight that she is facing some kind of eviction. I don't, I don't know the details, but it strikes me that you're rendering whoever is, is in charge of this ill-conceived plan is rendering good people homeless, vulnerable people homeless in order apparently to house homeless people. Where is the logic in that? Where is the planning in that? The, the city needs to be doing better. I also would like to comment in response to the report given at this meeting by Sheila Dodd as well as item number six on the meeting agenda. An older person just mentioned that the report outlines a situation that is essentially reactive. It's reactive to an emergency situation that is entirely predictable. There, there should have been a better system in place and a better safety net in place and it, it's, it's shocking to, to see the collapse of one agency caused this kind of breakdown with the ensuing scramble to just, just provide very basic services to people. This is, this is scary. And it shows that, you know, a lack of foresight, a lack of planning and the reality that nobody wants to think about. You know, worst case scenarios or what ifs. And, and that brings me to the last point that I would like to comment on item six on the meeting agenda. So the, the council is being asked to, the city staff has recommended that the council vote to adopt an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan this evening concerning hazard mitigation and I, I noticed in the draft and, and the amendment as drafted, the there's, there's essentially no attention brought to the the possibility of of a, a, a public shooting incident and I, I have emailed the city council and city administrator about my concerns and questions, so I will leave it at that. I don't want to go into detail since I have already communicated in writing, but I hope that the council had a chance to read my concerns and questions, and I hope that you will bring them up before you go ahead and vote on this amendment as is because it inadequately and incompletely addresses the issue of that, that I'm raising, you know, as one serious concern. You know, it's, it's inadequate by far and it is very much one of those issues and situations that people don't want to think about, but that, that need to be prepared for and, and planned in advance for. Do I have time or am I out of time?
You're out of time.
Okay, so thanks for listening.
Thank you. Brian Dunn.
Hello, my name is Brian Dunn from Champaign, Illinois. And I just wanted to come on and say that as an immunocompromised person, you know, I'm just kind of baffled and troubled by the recent decisions of Champaign and Urbana to drop mask mandates. This puts a lot of businesses that want to keep their employees safe in kind of a bind where, you know, the ultimate goal is to turn a profit and to be as commercial as possible. And, you know, a part of that is decision, decision-making, like allowing people to come in without masks. And so that puts a lot of people who work in the service industry with, you know, immunocompromisations like I have in, in great danger. And, you know, we're reading headlines about all these vaccinated Yankee players getting infected. And, you know, I am vaccinated, uh, for which, you know, that is a great security. But, you know, the, the whole pandemic, we're hearing about how masks don't keep you safe as much as they keep other people safe. And so, you know, I can mask as much as I want, but other people not having that mask definitely is just putting more people at risk. People are still catching COVID. Someone in my fiance's office is quarantining right now because of COVID. And this thing is still out there and we have to be very careful because we don't know anything about this virus. We don't know the long-term effects. Even if you catch it asymptomatic and you're not transmitting it, we don't know the long-term effects of how it affects your heart, how it affects your blood vessels. And we're just putting ourselves in a lot of unneeded danger and that bums me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, seen none. That concludes public input. Are there any staff reports besides Kevin Garcia? Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Just wanted to give an update on the latest masking guidance. Today, Governor Pritzker released State of Illinois, and that was followed by the Illinois Department of Public Health masking guidance. In both cases, they're rescinding emergency rules that enforce masking and distancing for vaccinated people. That's similar to, or it's consistent with the guidance that was released by the CDC last week. I have to say that the CDC announcement came basically without warning to anybody at the state and local levels, and I kind of think it took the White House by surprise too. But that said, we met several times with our community partners last week along with the CU Public Health Department. And City of Urbana, Champaign, University of Illinois County, acting under the guidance of the CEO PhD, modified our masking requirements. So at this point, we are all following in Champaign County. The fully vaccinated individuals can stop wearing masks indoors and outdoors. There are some exceptions. Healthcare settings, congregant care settings, public transportation, schools and daycare. Anyone twelve and under should continue wearing a mask in a public setting, including when they're around people outside of their immediate cohort or family. Businesses and organizations, public buildings, et cetera, can establish policies for their particular buildings. And I will be working with city staff over the next week and week or two to work out what our masking guidelines will be for when the city building opens to the public and applies to the library as well. The all agencies from Public Health District to Illinois Department of Public Health to the governor's office continue to emphasize and encourage people who are eligible for vaccination to get vaccinated. And according to the governor's office, as of today, more than four point six million Illinoisans are fully vaccinated, which includes fifty-eight percent of the residents sixteen years and older, then eighty-six percent of the residents sixty-five and older. So we're, we're inching upward, but we're not there yet. This has caused, this announcement from CDC, as I said, was a surprise. It really was. I thought it would come later. At the moment, we're also looking at opening up, we're beginning to accept, we will be accepting applications for special event permits. We do have a forty-five day in advance notice, so we have time to plan. And we'll be meeting again tomorrow with our countywide partners and I think the discussion item of safety plans for special, for public events will be on the agenda again. So this is, this is a well, it's an unfolding, unfolding situation and we're doing our best to respond to the guidance that we're getting.
Does council have any questions for the mayor? Grace.
Thanks for the update. There's a few detailed questions that got brought up. So I have two. If there's one to clarify, businesses can set their own rules for masks, correct?
Correct.
And are they allowed to enforce that, like refuse service if someone's not wearing a mask?
Yes, they have the option.
And, um, what about asking for verification of vaccination? In those conversations, I don't gather if that's like, okay, or you can't ask that?
I believe you can ask, but no one is required to share that information. That's, that's one of the problems here is this, you know, they, they tied masking to a metric that's, we cannot verify. It puts people, it puts everyone in a very difficult situation. There's no doubt about it.
Thank you. Those were my two questions. Thanks.
I know the U of I has a whole other set of guidelines. I mean, they're consistent with CDC. The U of I, you have to remember, is, is a sovereign entity in this community. They control their own buildings. They control their classrooms and their residence halls. So there's, there's a, you know, and then, and then they have a lot more information as far as testing status and that sort of thing. So, so we though, has worked very closely with the U of I, City of Champaign, and as I said, the Public Health District, the county and our other partners to, to modify our masking guidance.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, seen none. Thank you, Mayor. We'll go to ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash oh five dash one, I mean, zero one eight. An ordinance amending the two thousand and five comprehensive plan of the City of Urbana, the Champaign County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, twenty twenty update, case number two four one nine dash CP dash twenty-one. And there is a presentation by Kevin Garcia from Community Development. Kevin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. So I was thinking about holding off on talking about comprehensive plan amendments till later on in the presentation, but seeing as seeing as this is a comprehensive plan amendment and this is a relatively new council and we don't really bring these forward all that often. Anyway, just wanted to give a little, sort of a little background on comprehensive plan amendments and how they work. So the comprehensive plan really is our guiding policy document for the future of Urbana. It's also a living document, so it doesn't just get adopted and then stay static over the years as things change. So we, we are able to change the comprehensive plan as needed throughout time. So this could take the form of just making changes to parts of the plan, or more often, what we will do is add is add wholesale plans like, like the Bicycle Master Plan or the Pedestrian Master Plan or neighborhood plans. And we amend those into the comprehensive plan, so it becomes part of this sort of suite of plans for, for the future of Urbana. So the Hazard Mitigation Plan is one of those, is one such plan. This version tonight is the, is the third version back in two thousand and nine, and then again in two thousand and fifteen, the Urbana adopted the Champaign County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, also known as the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And we amended that into the comprehensive plan as part of that plan. We are now requesting that council review and then update, or sorry, review and adopt the new plan, which supersedes the, the twenty fifteen version of the plan. This plan was spearheaded by the Champaign County Planning and Zoning Department. Apologize, there was a, I'm, I'm making a correction to the, to the staff memo. So, so they prepared the plan and then this plan covers, as you would expect, natural disasters or natural hazards like big storms, tornadoes and floods. It also includes things like pandemics. And there are human-related hazards like cyber attacks, hazardous material spills and active shooter events. The Plan Commission reviewed the Hazard Mitigation Plan back at their April twenty-second meeting and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the plan to the city council. Now, this plan is really important because it is necessary to allow Urbana to tap into disaster relief funding should disasters occur. So if we don't have, if we don't approve the plan and, and we haven't adopted one, then we won't be able to tap into those funds if, if one of these hazards occurs. So it is really important that, that we adopt the new plan. If, yeah, if, if council has any questions, we do have Susan Monte from, from Champaign County Planning and zoning who spearheaded this effort. We also have Scott Test, who was our staff liaison from the City of Urbana, if you have detailed questions. The, that concludes my, my brief report. And the, the options that council has in this case are you can adopt the plan. You can adopt the plan with, with any recommended changes or you can deny the plan. And as, as I stated earlier, the, the Plan Commission recommended approval and staff concurs with that recommendation. I can answer questions or more likely Scott or Susan can answer them.
Any questions from council? Sharice.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi, Sharice.
Um, I, um, in adopting this plan, this is what I want to know. It is amendable, correct? We can, it can be amended at any time?
I believe it can be amended at any time. I know it can be amended if, you know, if council wanted to make changes tonight, it could be amended. It, it also, yes, could be amended in the future.
And another question, I guess I haven't, I know, you know, Urbana is a small town, so on and so forth. However, a question that's been in the back of my mind of, for a while, is, is there any kind of evacuation plan for the city in the event of major something happening? Is there anything like that in place or planning of it?
So I, I believe that would be a, a question for our, our fire department.
Okay.
And I, I am not sure. Scott?
I think Scott's interested in weighing in on this one.
Okay. Yeah, so I just want to clarify or distinguish between hazard mitigation and emergency response. So emergency response is a disaster or an incident has occurred and police and fire and maybe public works are responding. You know, that's the first minute to the first, to the first few days. This plan is about long before an incident, a disaster happens. What can we do now to mitigate that? So having plans, having emergency response plans is certainly something we can do. But as Kevin says, you know, that's, that's really in police-fire domain in terms of responding to that emergency.
But as Kevin says, you know, that's, that's really in police fire domain in terms of responding to that emergency and having those plans.
Okay, that, that's, that's, that is that not something that would be shared within the comprehensive plan though as well regarding hazard, you know, issues? Or is, or is that has to be separate and to what? It, it. It's set aside to what I know the, you know, the hazardous plan is, is that. I, I don't understand why they can't be, why one can't be encompassed with the other, I guess.
Well, I think an emergency response type plan is more of a, a day to day operate, well, not day to day. You don't have emergencies every day. But it's more an operational plan. And the comprehensive plan is really a policy document. So I, I don't think that's necessarily the, the place for an operational plan to be housed.
Okay. I, I, I'm just trying to understand. I suppose why not? Because I guess what comes to mind, I understand, you know. I understand us having to, we need to be prepared for floods, flash floods. Tornadoes, serious tornadoes or. And, 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 and such. I would just have thought that also. In addition to what we're, since we're, you know, and you're talking about emergency response. It just seems like. That would also kind of be. If, you know, Plan B. Underneath, in, in, within this particular kind of plan as well, but I guess not. Okay.
I think at the risk of speaking for police and fire, I think they would say that's the sort of thing that they train for and plan for every day.
Okay. It's just about, it, for me, it's just. About knowing and letting, and the public knowing that there's something like that in, in place. I'm done.
Okay, uh, I think Mary Alice was first mayor on, I will get to you. Go ahead, Mary Alice.
Thank you, Kevin and Scott. Scott, that, that makes some sense. We're talking about mitigation plans, basically trying to reduce the possible. In, in the event of any of these catastrophic type of events to, what do we have in place that would be able to mitigate those impacts of those things? But I've really got a question kind of procedurally. So you had mentioned, Kevin, that in order to have this plan in place, it would give us the opportunity to apply for federal funds in. In the event that any of these types of events happened. But we have one in place. And so this is a kind of a countywide plan, I believe, or it's over a, a general region. And so since we already have one in place, how does that, if, if the city of Urbana wants to make some changes to it? Does it have to go through all the bodies or is this just as a package deal? That's what I'm trying to figure out procedurally, how that works.
Yeah. And that's a good question. I think Susan probably is, is best equipped to answer that.
Good question. And well, let me, let you know that every five years it's necessary to update the plan. The Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. So actually the plan has expired, the one that Urbana had adopted. And so it's necessary to re-adopt the update, which includes all of the latest data for all of the risk assessments. It includes a, a new list of prioritized mitigation actions in that table that I think you saw a copy of. And so that is something you can vary in time and. Just having an updated plan allows you to apply for grant funds to implement some of these mitigation actions that you have listed. And other ideas or mitigation actions that may relate to any of the hazards or threats identified in this plan. So it's, it's a good thing to have a, a valid updated plan in place.
So there's also these statuses in this table here and based on what you just said, I'm wondering, so the statuses that are in here. New, pending and ongoing. Ongoing, it seems to me like to be a carryover from the last five year plan. And then pending are things that have been working on and then new are items that have been added this time. Is that basically a good synopsis?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, on, ongoing are, are actions that are funded and underway. Pending are actions that have, were, were in, either we already intended to do them or the problem more likely they were in the previous iteration of this plan. But we haven't been able to fund and complete them. And then new are, are new actions that we would hope to have an opportunity to grant fund if grant funds become available.
Okay. And then my final question is talking about. The area wide warning text is something that is ongoing and I don't know if we have a, if that, based on the statuses, it sounds like. We already have the funding for, it's already in the plans, but to the best of my knowledge, it's not operational yet. Is that correct?
My understanding is that our Emergency Management Agency in Champaign County, together with universities and Parkland College. All, all promote having a text system and the most state of the art updates to that kind of system in place. And I believe any resident or any citizen in Champaign County can access that and sign in, sign up for it. By going to the Champaign County Emergency Management Agency website.
That's correct. The, the County Emergency Man- Management Agency has this capacity already.
Okay. Well, it would be good to be able to promote that to residents so that they know where to sign up for that. I certainly get a lot of emergency texts from the U of I. But I've never gotten one from the City of Urbana. And I'm just thinking back to when we've had some emergency orders that came very. Very quickly, I'm thinking about when we had a curfew last year and, and a notification went out about 20 minutes before the curfew went into place. I don't know if those would be things that would be included in that emergency text system. But certainly getting that information out to the public, I think would be helpful.
Mayor Marlin.
Just in response to the, the questions that Sharice raised, I, I want to assure people, we have a very robust. Emergency Management Agency here in Champaign County. They train all the time. Many of us on the staff, including myself, and many, many staff members have gone through a week long training in terms of disaster management. And it's, it's in collaboration with local law enforcement, also the U of I. Many, many different agencies that would be involved in responding to disasters and emergencies of various sorts, anywhere from. Tanker cars overturning on a track near the football stadium to a terrorist attack to a natural disaster. And that sort of thing. So there are plans in place, people, there are plans in place.
Any other questions? Grace.
Uh, thank you. Is about the grant funding. I was wondering if we have applied for anything because, I mean, we've had a current hazardous, hazardous mitigation plan. Up until now, right? It's like we need to renew. I was wondering if we've applied for anything or there's been those possibilities. Someone mentioned in the public FEMA reimbursement with pandemic stuff, especially with pandemic being a part of that. One of those disasters. So I was wondering if we've applied and if there are opportunities to.
There is a note in, in, in what, in the table. I can't remember which action it is where we did apply for some, some FEMA grant funding, but we're not successful. That must have been some number of years ago, if we can find that note, but I, I think just limited staff time, we haven't been able to, to put together an application.
And are there plans to, do you know, like anything coming up?
I wanted to interject here and add that my understanding is that anytime there is any need to acquire property for flood mitigation. Purposes that, that is something that the city would actively pursue through their engineering division and planning.
Yes. I guess I was also talking about particularly for the pandemic since that's a really unique one that we probably don't usually qualify for as one of our hazards.
Yeah. To answer your question, I, I don't know of any intentions to apply for a particular program. The, the applications, federal applications are quite involved and takes a lot of commitment to, to take on one.
Yeah, just seemed like the phrasing was that that was part of the importance of this plan. I mean, it sounds like something we need to have just on file anyway, but it seemed like it was being phrased that the importance was we need this to apply for grant funding. So I was just wondering if there was any plans to do that, which sounds like nuts. Thank you.
Some of the grant funding that we would, we would access by having a current plan is actually post disaster recovery funding. So we want to have this, as you say, on file in that eventuality.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, any discussion?
All right, Chris, I think we need a motion. I'm happy to make.
Okay, okay. All right. Do I have a motion for. Ordinance number 2021 dash oh five dash oh one eight. The ordinance amending the 2005 Comprehensive Plan.
I'll move that we approve this with a recommendation for approval to city council.
Second?
A second.
Okay. Motion by Mary Alice Wu to. Amend the 2005 Comprehensive Plan and the motion is to approve and send it to city council. Seconded by Sharice Hershey and will the clerk please call the roll?
Hi, Chris.
Oops, go ahead.
I, I do have one final question, just based on what Grace had said. Since I know that federal grant applications are quite involved. I'm wondering if the, there's an opportunity for multiple jurisdictions to apply for the same grants to, to kind of reduce the burden, but. Obviously different hazards that happen in our communities don't just go on our geographic boundaries. So I don't know what the rules are there, but is there a group within the cities and the villages that would be able to apply as a one application?
Certainly a suggestion like that would be considered by the Regional Plan Commission as something to pursue jointly. Also, once, once this plan is adopted, then the city will be in a, a position to pursue grant funding to perhaps recover some, some expenses from the pandemic. And people are in, entities are still going through the guidance to understand exactly how to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to have the clerk call the roll.
Swoon?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Okay, I think that takes us to council input and communications. Does anybody have any communications? Go ahead, Sharice.
Um, I just wanted to. Say something in particularly, Mr. Dunn had brought up about the mask mandate and, and so forth. And I, you know. I understand his trepidation regarding how this. Could be so confusing for people, but the other thing that I, I've just been aware of, and I'm sure he has been too, probably. I can't speak for him. How political every, people have made this, wearing a mask. Just wearing a mask, you know, it's been made into this political football going back and forth. And I long ago, I can say, speak for myself. Decided that I have to do what's best for me and my house. And. I know that, you know, him being immunocompromised and he's probably. Feeling quite anxious and I understand that I have a, an elderly parent that I care for and I'm always. Conscious of her health. So I would just like to say that I'm going to continue to wear a mask regardless. Of what the mandate is because that is a choice that I've, I'm, I'm making. And everyone else. You know, our citizenry, we all have basic common sense, I would like to think. And if, if. You know, there, there are businesses that, that they can continue to require masking and, you know. There's just so much we can do based on the fact that. Like Mayor Marlin said, the CDC chain, you know, just up and said, okay, you don't have to wear a mask if you're vaccinated. We don't have control over that, but, and we don't necessarily have the power, I don't think, to override what the state, what the governor might say. So. Mr. Dunn, I just want you to take care of yourself and you know what you have to do for you. So. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, James.
Yes, thank you, Chris. I wanted to mention a couple of things. First of all. The Silver Hearts Organization over in the Silverwood neighborhood is planning a five year anniversary on June 12th. The time is listed as 12:30 PM. They're still working on plan, so I hope to bring more details as we get closer. They are. Trying to create an event with COVID and safety in mind. So I hope to share more with you about that soon. I will also be meeting with the, the Sona area steering team. To check in with them and, and start talking about how to do outreach in Ward Seven. The McKinney area neighborhood watch group is also on my list. They've reached out. So I'll be talking to them soon. I do want to mention that. I know many of us, five of us on this council, we're not part of the discussion and the decision to purchase. The apartments on California. It's a program that is, that has merit and the goals of it are important for the community. But I do want everyone to listen carefully to the concerns that were raised, that we don't. Create more issues by trying to solve issues. So I, I, I trust Daniel Chinoweth to have that thought in mind. Because her goal is to serve people in need and so, but we do need to listen to the residents of those apartments and make sure we're not. Putting them in a tough place and in a tough time. Thank you.
Anybody else? Grace?
Thank you, Chris. Just want to say thank you to the public for your participation tonight. Definitely always appreciate hearing your thoughts and insights. Took lots of notes, too many to comment on all of them. But please continue with the comments. I find it very helpful for guiding some thoughts and things throughout the meeting. And particularly, I liked the idea a lot of having presentations with more community groups. A first followers presentation would be awesome. So James, let's talk about that. And yeah, appreciate your input and keeping us informed about what's going on and what the needs are. So thank you for that and hopefully we can address some of these very important issues even more so in the future.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mary Alice, can you take the chair for a second?
Sure, I'm happy to take the chair. The chair recognizes Chris Evans.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to echo Grace's comments. Public input is very important and I really appreciate folks that have been coming out and talking. On a sad note, I wanted to acknowledge the recent passing of Paul Worth, the owner of the Iron Post. The Iron Post was a mute live music venue on Racine Elm and for 20 years brought. Hundreds of people to the downtown Urbana area. The Iron Post was, you know, the premier place for live music. And featured just about every local musician in town for, you know, 20 years and Paul ran a great shop and. He served on the Urbana Business Association and he helped out with the Sweet Corn Festival. And he was a fixture in downtown Urbana. So condolences to his family and he'll be greatly missed. Thank you. I can take it back.
All right. And I'd be happy to make a statement as well, Chris. That's.
Go ahead.
All right. I wanted to echo what James said. All right. I wanted to echo what James said about the purchase, the recent purchase of the California houses, sorry, apartment buildings, and just to kind of let people know, just like leases are confusing, a government and how government runs is a bit confusing. So it was township that purchased those apartment buildings. And while we are city council members, it is township funds that were used to purchase those buildings. My hope is that we can come to a resolution that serves both the needs of the community, the residents who exist, currently live there. I know that Danielle's been working on some items to try and help mitigate that. I look forward to hearing what other ideas people have in the apartment buildings, as well as Danielle's ideas on, on how we can achieve both of these goals. I recognize and, and agree that we should not exacerbate the problem by making more people homeless. So I just wanted to let the people know, I think there are two or three people who came today that we hear you tonight, and we hope to work to a good resolution on that.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, well, that takes us to closed session. So Jason, I guess.
I think, Chris, we need to make a motion to go into closed session first.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to go into closed session?
So I'll move that we go into closed session for collective bargaining issues pursuant to five ILCS 120 to C, no, to C2.
Do I have a second?
A second.
James will second this. So motion by Mary Alice Wu to go into closed session, seconded by James Quisenberry. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the motion passes, and I guess we go to our email accounts to get into the next meeting.
Yeah, just a reminder, you have to exit this meeting, go to your email and enter the other meeting.
Okay, we are, do we have a motion to go back into open session?
I'll make a motion that we go back into a, an open session.
Seconded?
A second.
Okay, motion by Mary Alice Wu, seconded by Sharice Hershey. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
Okay, now, you guys want to adjourn? Are we done? Okay, thank you, everybody.